Okay, thank you all for being here today. I'd like to get this meeting started. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on June 24, 2020, at the hour of 5:30 for consideration of business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on June 19, 2020, at 2:30 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. The agenda below is, there is a presence of a quorum with Mr. Houston and Mr. Lallan on Zoom, and I myself here at the District Office. Absent are Mr. Jason Starkey and Scott Friedman. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. If everybody would please stand.
Pledge of allegiance by the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Father, we thank you again for another opportunity, Lord, to do the Laguna Madre Water District business with our board members and our staff. Just ask you to obey us and give us knowledge and wisdom, and we make good decisions here tonight, and all for your glory, Lord, if we do your work here and provide all the good Samaritans with good service to all the customers and the public. Just want to thank you again, and Jesus may we pray, amen.
Thank you, Carlos. Okay, I'd like to open it up for invitation to the audience for any public comments. Anybody have anything to?
So, one thing, I just want to thank you for bringing some post assignments that you brought in today, the notice of six feet distancing. Thank you for that.
You're very welcome. Anything else? Anybody else? I did want to mention just something I noticed. We recently lost our, she's not working here anymore, old guy, the lady that used to take care of our office here, and I know we have a new lady now, I think she's doing a great job, by the way, every time I've come by, she's really kept it up, just the same, so thank you. I'm not sure what her name is, but thank you very much. Okay, consideration and discussion of possible approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of June 10, 2020. Has everybody had a chance to review that? And can I get a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Houston. A second.
He's out of the room for right now.
I can second it.
You can second it, Alex.
I did. We need to vote, though, Lallan's out of the room. Let's come back to that, if we can, whenever he gets in, we'll come back to that one. Okay, all right, we'll move on to item number five, General Manager's Report.
Yes, sir, from the, I guess, Mr. Secretary and members of the Board, I just wanted to mention the COVID. Oh. Yeah, he's not hearing.
There you go, okay. Back to, let's go back to item, item number four.
My apologies, had to run to the bathroom real quick.
That's okay, we got a motion to approve the minutes. I need a second.
Second, please.
Second from Lallan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, General Manager's Report.
We're on item number five, I have the COVID-19 update, and I will be giving an update every meeting from until further notice that we're out of it, which we're not. I think we're in it at the beginning of the big pandemic here because it's getting worse every day. Just wanted to let the Board know that we still have the doors locked at the front, we're still doing business through the window, receiving the payments through there, and anybody that needs to come in, they will let us know who we'll be waiting for, because there's a need to sign paperwork or whatnot, we'll let them in, the distancing and the mask. So, the others is we're, all employees are following protocol, temperature checks in the morning and after lunch with a handgun temperature gauge, and then we're doing washing our hands, following through with the distancing from each other, and we're also working on revising our schedules, hoping that we can work a schedule without coming back to the Board and saying, "In-house," and work that schedule, so everybody can work the 40 hours at different times. And we'll come back with that possibly by the next meeting, which I think the Board does not have to approve that schedule, but we'll check with Mr. Hanson on it. If we do, we'll wait until the next meeting. But also, we did ask Mr. Hanson to review our questionnaire on vacation time where the employees are leaving out of town, we're okay with that, he said that it's okay, and because we have some guidance procedures that we need to follow, which are, that we can ask travel history and future plans to travel, you know.
Is that when they come back?
Yes, when they come back. So, everything is okay, we worked on some of those questions, and it's going to work out perfect for the district employees that are here and, you know, out at the water treatments and the wastewater treatment plants, out in the field, it'll work similar for Let me see, otherwise, everything else is, we've been safe and doing our best to control and the spread, and I believe that as long as we follow protocol, we'll be okay.
Well, now you have signs.
Yes, yes. Then that's all I have, if there's any questions on that, let us know. Okay, then the next one that I have is the elections. Just a reminder that Saturday, July 18, 2020, is the first day to file or place on the general election ballot. But since we're closed on Saturday and Sunday, we will schedule that for Monday, July 20, and we open the office and provide the applications for anybody.
So the first day for applying is the 20th?
July 20. And, let me see, on another note, we did have a, on June 12, Friday, we did a Zoom meeting with County Clerk's Office, Elections Officer, and he provided information on the upcoming elections. So since we're combining the bond and the board election, we'll be saving some money on that part, which is good. It'll be the same price as that they're going to give us for the bond election itself. So, that's good news for that one. Just wanted to give an update to the Board, and like, there will be an agenda item on that, too, that's coming up for the...
For the bond election and the regular.
Yes, the agreement with the Laguna Madre Water District. That's all I have, any other questions that you all might have?
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, the next item, item number six, consider and discuss for possible approval of November 3, 2020, general and special election for the Laguna Madre Water District to be administered by the Cameron County Elections Department. Does anybody have any questions on that item?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Second from Mr. Lallan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, District Director of Operations Report, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, draw, Secretary, members of the Board. I wanted to come back and give you an update on the pole installation that KB Powers were doing for AEP, and they're, at this point, they're pretty much finished for this area, and they're, they completed that in June 18. They are now working on line installations and rolling conductors on the new lines. There will continue to be temporary lane closures for what they're doing, but they're supposed to be for short periods of time, and that's going to carry pretty much through July 31st, so that's going to carry for most of the summer. But as I stated in the memo before, they'll restart their pole installation later on this year, so they'll be working on that during the winter months more likely. I don't know if anybody has any questions. The installation for most of the poles, they were varied anywhere from six inches to 10 feet apart. The closest that they got at six inches was here at Champion to Sat Shore Drive. They came within six inches of a 16-inch waterline. We did have a few line breaks, but they're taking responsibility for it, and they have acknowledged that they will pay for whatever it is they did.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions from the Board?
I was surprised they got done with that job as good as they had.
Yes, they did, they did really good as far as the installation, they even brought a second casing, or a second drill, so they could put the casing, which was a much softer vibrator, and it really worked out, especially when they got within six inches of the waterline.
So what we have here is basically the summary of all the issues we had or breaks we had?
The other report that I brought forward was the pre-treatment report, and this is to give you an idea of what the pre-treatment manager and the, and his crew have been working on besides the lift stations, they have contacted some of the food service establishment. Right now, he's contacted seven besides the one that he went through with the South Bay Area staff, but he's getting, he got a package together with an introduction letter and also letting them know how to figure out the grease trap that they need. And what I provided here was just a sample of how they do that calculation. I know that at times he's been asked if he can provide the size of the grease trap, but we're not, we can't do that, because we don't know for sure how much grease that food service establishment is going to generate, and if we give him something that turns out to be false, then they're going to come back and claim us.
And that's normally, well, on new projects, that's normally that developer or contractor that does...
They contact an engineer, and it's all in accordance with the plumber's guide that they use, and that's what they need to do. I also provided a attachment, too, which is the coverings, as you can see on the picture that I submitted, that was a cover for a grease trap that's there, and these coverings that are on here, they're just like cement, but they're not that heavy, and this is the concern, because back in July of 2018, in Rochester, New York, there was a toddler that fell into a grease trap, and unfortunately, they weren't able to rescue him in time. So this has been a real concern now that the grease trap or the pre-treatment manager has taken over, and he did talk to the restaurant owner that had this grease trap there with those two covers, and he did, the owner did say that they will replace that, so they're looking at replacing that. I didn't, what you see on the board now on the screen is something that is pretty much realistic as to what it should be. I didn't have time or didn't get the information to be able to provide this with the, with the report, but those two man covers are covering a 1,000-gallon grease interceptor or grease trap, and that's what they should look like to be safe and make sure that we don't have any problems. And then the third picture here is the dipstick pro-grease, and that's what they use to go in and measure to see if the, they're within regulations as far as the amount of grease that's in there and the water, and check the floods that goes in there, everything that's going down in there, the solids that settle at the end. And that's what they're, what they're doing to check it out. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Frankie, you want to add anything to that? Are you okay?
Hello, members of the Board, Francisco Usmann, Pre-Treatment and Lift Station Manager. We've checked several food service establishments, these alongside, along the ones we did with whom we accompanied, the South Bay Area Code Enforcement, and the, right now, I've focused a lot on those cement ones, I believe they're in the board packet, had a particular food service establishment on the island, and first and foremost, there are safety risks, and apart from the dangerous gases that they emit, so I am working with them very closely, and we've had communicated via email, everything's via email, so the record's there that we are, I'm doing, we are doing our due diligence, and they're trying to do their due diligence as well to get these, get these rectified. Apart from that, we're going to just keep at it, and of course, with respect, professionalism, and courtesy in mind for every restaurant owner and food service establishment, so we're just, we're here to help and assist them as much as our service policy permits us to do.
Well, thank you for taking on the responsibility, and I'm glad that you're out there and working with your trust, respect for the business as well. The idea.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
On the picture, the other one thing I wanted to point out right there is like when this grease trap, what he's found here in some of these grease traps is that the, where you have the flow from the sinks and the dishwater, that pipe, and the one where the flow to the sewer lines on some of these grease traps that he's encountered, don't have those, and so he's working with the food service establishment to make sure that they install that, because what's happening as, as the grease goes in, it's coming right back out into the sewer system instead of staying in the grease trap.
Yeah, basically, we're on two of them that I can recall, the two vertical pipes, TBC pipes, the vertical ones, they're just, to be candid, they're missing, and that, that just basically is allowing just the grease to pass through from one pipe straight to the other one. The trap is not, in essence, trapping anyone.
Do you have that illustration, would you carry copy of that?
It's actually on the inspection form that I made, it's actually on there, and I...
That's a good tool.
Most of the food service establishment owners have come out and have physically seen the grease traps with me, I mean, literally seen it, and I point out these deficiencies, so we're trying to, I'm trying to sort them out alongside with them, and just give them any feedback, any tools that they need, any information they need, basically.
That includes the report, does anybody have any questions?
Has he encountered any reluctance on any of the restaurant owners or operators to correct the issues?
No, sir, not so, none whatsoever right now.
That's good.
None whatsoever, everyone I've spoken with, managers, owners, assistant managers, everybody has been forthcoming in providing manifests from when they clean them out and things of that nature, but no turbulence whatsoever has been there.
Thank you, Frankie.
Any other questions? Hearing that, going to item number eight, Mr. Engineer's Report.
Good evening. Yeah, I just got two items here on the Engineers' Report, mainly just the status of some ongoing projects. The first one being our SCADA upgrade for the raw water pump stations and the elevator storage tanks. We did, you know, award this work to MPC back in November, and we've been reviewing some middles and the works being in fabrication at the various factories, and we're going to start our equipment here, we can do this week and early into July, and, you know, there are quite a bit of sites that are getting improved through this effort, you know, the river pump station, reservoir for the quad this, and then all five of our, four of our elevator storage tanks, and then antennas that are going to go along with it. And so, I guess part of this improvement is also getting our operators some factory training, and we were wanting to try to get that scheduled before the install, so we may need to think, and this travel, this travel would be up in Minnesota, so we got to see if we're going to start getting that scheduled in July, but that'd be one of the items to start considering and moving on, since we're getting close to having all the equipment here and proceeding with the install. And then, and then the altitude valves as well, we're in the process of getting those modified and replaced to be compatible with our SCADA three, and so that includes some action items that we have for the 16-inch valve that was side shaped, that's a separate board item here at the meeting today, and then along with some, there's pilot systems that we need to modify on the, on the other valves, there's a 112-inch and 210-inch, and so that's a separate item, purchasing still working on, and it'll get presented at a future meeting. But that's, just wanted to kind of give you the full scope of what's involved with this SCADA project, you know, through a little summary here to have a report for your records to know where we're sitting with everything.
Sir, we got a lot of honors in mind.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, and I mean, if there's any questions on this SCADA, I can, or, you know, conclude this one and move on to the next report. All right, so the next item is an update for adding chlorine dioxide to Water Plant One, and, you know, again, we're doing the de-install in-house, we're working with moving our manual generator from Water Plant Two, it's already been installed, and Water Plant One ready to go. Operator training's already in place, because we're using chlorine dioxide at Water Plant Two. We ordered the double wall tank, it's installed, and right now, one of our action items is to purchase the flow meters we need to monitor the addition of chlorine dioxide for our raw water mains, and so we've got a 10-inch and a 14-inch raw water lines that need some strap-on meters, so that's, that's an action item for today's meeting, and then once we receive those, we'll be doing the install ourselves. And we did get the CT study approved, so that was something pending when this board packet went out, but we did receive the letter yesterday. So we do have the approved revised disinfection plan or contact time revision, that's already been approved by the state, so we've got a green light to implement this job, it's just a matter of complete the install and bringing the water plant online, you know, with chlorine dioxide in place.
And that's still serving as our backup.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I mean, at this point, we'll have the smoke clarifier and the chlorine dioxide, so we should have the taste and delivery improvements, and, you know, be able to get about 1 NGD here at this water plant. So, we think that concludes the Engineers' Report.
Okay, hearing none. Item number nine, is this mic still? Okay, it was off, I don't know what it... Consider and discuss for possible approval of the toxicity test for Andy Bowie Wastewater Treatment Plant affluent.
All right, now this is, again, it's doing some additional testing to reduce the cop, the more stringent effluent limitation that they're trying to add to our permit at Andy Bowie Wastewater Plant, and so this is the lab that does our regular bomb monitoring on a quarterly basis, but this would be a special test to do the water effects ratio and reduce that copper addition, and that's going to be added to that permit, but with this testing in place, you know, it'll make it less severe than what's in the draft department.
And if I understand this correctly, we're doing this additional testing because the place where we are discharging into is kind of a sealed area or...
Yeah, it's a constructed wetland from the gate, they're installed at the brine center, and I did have a discussion with legal, which...
Has, can I get a motion from the Board to approve this?
Let me ask Charles a question. Charles, what happens if during the testing, we fall outside the allowable parameters?
Well, with, we expect this testing to, I mean, I guess the answer is we have to keep, you know, coming up with a plan, we have three years to comply with the copper limit, but right now, we're trying to, you know, minimize what that, or maximize what that limit would be, so, you know, with, what this testing is supposed to give us is that it'll increase the current concentration limit that's in our permit by two, and so with that getting done, essentially, four of the five samples we took during the permit renewal application would be in compliance versus under the current draft permit, we busted all five, so that's what this water effects ratio would get us, and so, I mean, you know, I mean, if this doesn't get us to the finish line where there's no more work added, we'd have to look at a process improvement on the plant, which would be another cost that's unknown.
Or, or if we just directly discharge into the bay?
Yeah, that would, that would be another option to look at for the stream modeling.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Quick question. 21,500 for this type of testing, is this something we get quotes on or not?
Well, BioAquatics Lab is the only one who can perform the test in the state, that's why it's really a single source item, they're the only lab that has the means to conduct the tests.
They're the only lab in the state, and so they just get to charge whatever the heck they want, $21,500? Wonder how much work it actually takes, maybe that's a great price, I don't know, I don't know anything about how much that stuff should cost. What's your thought on how much it costs, Charles?
Yeah, I mean, Francisco can give more input on it.
What, I'm, sorry, once again, greetings. Formerly the Wastewater Assistant Manager, as you all know, BioAquatic, they cultivate their own organisms for this, for these testings. Basically, yes, we can find other laboratories, they're going to market up the price, because they have to outsource these samplings either way to BioAquatics. In other words, BioAquatics will send you one, one little sheet of paper for a quote, we can go with, what are they, AMB Labs, Anna Lab, they're still going to outsource this work to BioAquatics, because they're the only ones that more likely handle the certain particular EPA method that this testing needs, and they cultivate the organisms that these testings need. That's why when we do our quarterly wet testing at our wastewater treatment plants, BioAquatics is one that can handle this, and I researched it over my years in the wastewater department, and all roads, from all the quotes I got, all the roads led back, led me back to BioAquatics because of two things for wet testing, the two, the two EPA methods they used, I believe was 006 and 007. It turned out, and you can... Uh, it turned out, and you can even, uh, research it on T C Q because every registered laboratory has to be on T C Q. And only Bioaquatics had those two EPA methods. They were the only ones authorized, uh, to run those two EPA men in, in the state. In other words, all the other quotes I received, they were just gonna outsource it to Bioaquatics because they weren't even registered in the T C Q, uh, website as, uh, as being able to handle these, these two EPA methods.
I second, uh, I second the motion.
There's a first and a second, uh, first, Mr. Houston, a second by Llan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Walk in your mic a little bit more, Alex. It's, it's pretty tough to hear you. Orlando, can you turn up Alex's mic? He sounds like he's in a distant room somewhere.
It's shutting off is what it is. Okay. Alright, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, thanks, Alex. Appreciate it.
Um, okay, uh, that was item, uh, item number ten. Uh, consider and discuss for possible approval of agreement with the city of Port Isabel for land swap at Laguna Mata Water District Maintenance Yard and P Port Isabel Industrial Park adjacent to water plant number one.
Yeah, I don't know, Brian, if you wanna just present, uh, this item.
Yes, this is the agreement that, um, I've put together that just basically outlines what it is that we're exchanging. Um, I've sent it to them. I don't think Port Isabel's agreed to it. This is just, you know, a draft of the agreement. I would ask the board to approve it in its form. We probably will change the signature line, for example, to Mr. Friedman or, or anything like that. But if we can get approval today, then we can get an approval from Port Isabel and then we can get moving on this.
I have a motion by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Llan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, item eleven, director of finance report.
Gentlemen, I just wanted to give you some, uh, updates. Let's begin with the consumption report. Consumption currently is, uh, is back in line with, uh, for me, it was in line with, uh, historical, uh, levels of, of consumption. This is looking very good, a hundred thirty-one million gallons, uh, which is fourteen million gallons over last year. I would qualify that though by mentioning that, that we do have a new agricultural customer that started service last year. And, um, his, uh, consumption alone in, in, for the month of May was fifteen million gallons. So, um, if you take that into, into account, if you were to subtract that, uh, the raw water usage uh, from that one customer, uh, it would still be, uh, uh, almost identical to, to last year's, uh, consumption. It would be about one million dollars, uh, one million gallons, uh, less in, in consumption from last year. So we're, we're still, uh, doing, doing very well.
Significant.
Consumption. Moving on to the financial report. So what we saw during the, um, the, the first six months of the year was that, uh, revenues, uh, performed very well uh, over the first six months of the year. Then, uh, when the pandemic hit, uh, we, during the, the month that we had the shelter in place order, there was a significant drop in revenues from South Padre Island, but they were partially offset by increases in revenue on, on the mainland. And what we saw moving forward after that, uh, in the month of May, the, the levels, um, uh, returned back to normal very quickly. Uh, and now they're, they, the month of May was back in line with, uh, what our, our revenues, uh, were, were like before the start of the pandemic and similar to, uh, levels from, uh, from prior years. Uh, the, the increase that we saw was, uh, over, over last year was primarily due to the, uh, increase in the rates, uh, over last year's. So if that, uh, if, if I use those, those figures from, from May to, uh, predict out what we would be, uh, at, at this point, the revenues would, um, uh, exceed the budgeted revenues, uh, about, uh, four hundred ninety thousand, which would be about a, a four point three, uh, percent, uh, increase over, over the budget. Also want to mention the, uh, the update on our, um, our customer portal. We, we now hit, uh, two thousand registered, uh, accounts on, on our, uh, Water Smart, uh, customer portal. We, uh, we, we made some postings on, uh, on our social media to, uh, promote that. That represents about thirty percent of our, of our, uh, total, uh, customer accounts.
That's great.
Which is really good, yeah.
That's very good.
That, uh, exceeds what I expected to have, uh, over the first year. Uh, we, we began last year, July twenty nineteen, and so, uh, about a, a month short of, of, of a year, we've already, uh, had about thirty percent of our customers.
This is the, the app we're talking about?
This is the, the customer portal. So now, uh, the, yes, it's the app. It's, uh, uh, the, the customer's ability to access their, their smart meters and tell, uh, uh, how much consumption they have. And now, you know, encouraging people to, uh, uh, can pay online, uh, all through, uh, the, uh, you know, a lot of customers didn't even know that they could pay online before. And now that we have the, 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 the customer, uh, portal, there's a link on there where they, if they're looking at their account, they could, they can pay their account as well. So just wanted to give you an update on that. And that concludes my, uh.
Any questions for our director of finance? Hearing none, uh, we move on to item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval restoring section one point four point eight, disconnection and penalties on late fees corresponding to the service policy for the Laguna Mata Water District due to COVID nineteen.
So, um, we have, uh, been following the recommendations and the, the guidelines of the Public Utility, uh, Commission and their, uh, order to, um, suspend the, uh, the disconnections for non-payment, uh, and the late fees as well that, uh, expired on June thirteenth. So I wanted to bring it, uh, to the board's attention so that, um, uh, we could, uh, make a decision as far as i- if we want to go ahead and, and, uh, restore this, uh, a section that we suspended from our service policy and go ahead and, and begin, uh, doing.
So we're gonna be going back to normal, basically?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Eddie, what's, how, how are the arrears percentage-wise? I mean, how do they compare as to last year more or less?
So overall, uh, for the, for the month that just ended, the percentage that's, um, um, past due, so after the due date, money's due past the due date is about two point six percent. And, uh, more than thirty days past due is, is about half a percent. So, uh, overall, it, it, the, the, the numbers are, 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 are okay. I, I think they're, uh, pretty, pretty good. There are.
Do you think they compare, how, how do you think that compares to this time last year?
I.
Just a guess.
That number, but I, I would guess that, uh, um, I would say about, about double what they were last year, I, I would guess. Maybe, do you have any, any guess about, about that? No, it, it'd be hard to estimate, but just off the top of my head.
The typical would be about less than one percent of our customers.
Correct.
Are probably doing. Okay.
Yes, we do have, uh, each, each, uh, due date, we have customers that we regularly contact to let them know that, uh, they're gonna be cut off. Uh, this is our normal procedure, uh, if they don't come and pay. And now, since we've suspended this part of our policy, uh, there are a few customers that have not, uh, that have not called, not, uh, made any efforts to pay and, uh, and, and, they haven't responded to, to us when we've tried to reach out and, uh, asked them to make payment and so.
Um, I guess my question. Go ahead.
Yeah, Alex, I would like to keep in place some type of policy that people who are making an attempts to make payments, to give them some additional time and latitude. You know, people who are just not responding or ignoring, you know, cut them off. But I mean, if someone is, is truly, really trying to do their best, you know, we, we need to work with them.
Well, uh, I think one of the, one of the things that we could consider would be to just, um, postpone it for now and, and basically because we, we really don't know, there's been new issue, new orders issued from the judge, from the county judge, so we really don't know where we're gonna be in a couple of weeks. So it might be a good idea, like Herb is saying, to just suspend it for now, just put it off for now and we'll check at the next meeting how things are looking, uh, and if we feel that we need to bring it back, then we'll bring it back. But that might be, I think we're entering a little bit of an unknown a- area right now, uh, with the new, new orders from the county.
I would make a motion to table it and Eddie, at the next meeting, you know, get us some figures on how we compare as to last year. And, you know, I think you know where I'm coming from, but I'll make a motion to table.
There's a motion on the table? Is there a second?
I second.
Second from Llan, the only thing I would add is, uh, let's, um, when you bring it back, let's look at what is, how the people that are gonna be negatively impacted. Let's have maybe a little plan for that, how we're gonna address that.
Sure.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to table, uh, item thirteen, consider and discuss for possible approval, modification of fee structure with the current credit card processor, Hammer Enterprises.
So, um, I reached out to our, our current, uh, credit card processor, to discuss the, uh, our current fee, fee structure. Uh, our current fee structure is, uh, is basically three dollars for every hundred dollars of, 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 uh, a bill that, that's being paid. And, and over, uh, uh, five hundred dollars, they charge, uh, uh, three percent. So, uh, I reached out to them and, uh, to see if they could do anything to, uh, lower their fees. And, um, I'm pleased that, uh, they came back with a, uh, a proposal that would be two dollars and fifty cents, uh, for, for any size transaction of to a thousand dollars. And then, uh, after, after a thousand dollars, it would be a, a, a fee of two point five percent. That's, that's a significant savings for our customers. This is something that, uh, we don't pay. The, it, this, this cost gets passed on to the customers.
Right.
So this would be a, a significant savings for, for our customers.
What, um, what, I mean, I guess, I'm wondering what, uh, do our big, uh, commercial accounts use credit cards or do they pay in that manner? The reason I bring this up is because the, I have heard from some of our customers that they don't think it's fair that we charge them for paying right away, which is, we get our money right away when they pay with their credit card, don't we? It's the same thing as a check. Okay, okay. Well, that, that's the only concern that I've heard over, you know, fees that, uh, people make it easy for, or we make it easy for them to pay us, but yet we are charging for that. So I'm unsure how the rest of the board feels. I'd love to hear from them.
Uh, every, every credit card processor charges, uh, a fee. Some businesses, they, um, they, they absorb that cost. Uh, but governmental, uh, institutions, uh, they usually don't. I, I'm not aware of any that absorb that cost.
I think the proposal is a whole lot better than it was. I had a friend who had a bill that was just a little over a hundred dollars and he wanted to pay with a credit card and it was gonna cost him six dollars because it was three dollars for the first hundred and three dollars for anything over that. So the straight two fifty up to a thousand is a whole lot better off for our customers.
I also want to, um, uh, mention that, uh, they did offer us, uh, uh, three additional proposals. One is for a system which, um, shows displays when the customer is wanting to pay with a credit card. Uh, on the same screen will show their, uh, their, their balance and recent payments. Uh, they call that their my bill, uh, application. Their, uh, third proposal was a customer portal, which I, uh, I informed them that we already have a, a, a customer portal. And their, their fourth proposal was one that, um, I was interested in, which is, I, it's a, a background, um, processing where the customer would be, uh, would seamlessly, uh, be logged into their Water Smart account and pay and, and all the, uh, the, the credit card processing would be done in the background. So as far as the customer is concerned, they're paying on the Water Smart website and they're, they don't have to go anywhere else. The way the current setup is, is a customer, uh, when they click to pay, they click that button and a, a new page comes out.
Different portal.
And they go, they go to the, this page being the Hammer page, our credit card processors page. And they're, uh, the way it is right now, there's no, uh, there's no balance information or, or anything like that. They, they have to enter all their information and, and to complete the payment process. Now, I would like, uh, uh, to have a, uh, seamless integration where all the credit card processing is done in the background and there, there is a, um, just a, a simple experience, uh, for the customer. Now that, uh, uh, as far as the, as, as Hammer's concerned, uh, there wouldn't be any, any cost on their side. What it would involve would be some, uh, programming on the Water Smart side where they have to do all the integration work. So, um, there wouldn't be, there, there may be, uh, a, a cost in asking Water Smart to do all that, uh, integration work, but, uh.
If we do it through our portal, then we save that money?
If it, you know, would, there are the, these, these separate options. So there's the option where, uh, we could just keep things the way they are, uh, with, with sending our customers to the Hammer page and maybe adding the my bill, which would, uh, um, give additional information to the customer so that they can see what their, what their balance is when they're paying, so that they make sure that they, they're paying the right amount. And, and also show them any recent payments so that we don't get any duplicate, uh, uh, payments from our customers. But I would, uh, I would like to have the opportunity to work with, with, with Hammer and with Water Smart to at least get a quote to find out how much, uh, it would cost to, uh, completely integrate these, these, uh, Water Smart with Hammer so that we get a seamless, uh, experience for the customer.
Would, would, would it be better to table this item and you come back with this information or?
If you, if you, um, uh, approve proposal one, proposal four, uh, there is no cost for the proposal four, but it, it just, uh, gives me. But it it just gives me the opportunity to work with with Water Smart, and then I would come back with you and let you know what the cost is if we decide to go with the integration with.
Whether one or four.
We can choose both. Of course, I I talked to Hammer and I told them, is it one or the other? And they said, no, you could choose both. If you choose proposal one, we'll we'll go ahead and go with the new free structure. And if you also approve proposal four, I'll go ahead and work with Water Smart to find out what exactly would be involved in getting the integration.
I'll make a motion for one and four.
I got a motion for recommendation one and four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Llan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 14, discussing, consider and discuss for possible approval of purchase of 16 inch two-way flow altitude valve for water tower number three on Wisachee, South Padre Island.
This is part of what Charles mentioned on the engineer report. We need to replace this altitude valve with such at the island. We look for all the specs with the with prison nickels. Their recommendation is going with the tile format for 21,700.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Houston, second by Llan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 15, consider and discuss for possible approval of purchase of two ultrasonic flow meters for water plant number one.
This is a TCQ recommendation for the chlorine diodes for the water for the raw water main. Recommendation is going with Sander South for 10,555.
Any questions?
Is this a recommendation from TCQ or a requirement?
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement for TCQ.
Yes, for our monthly operating reports to do the monitoring.
All right, so move.
Motion by Mr. Houston, second by Llan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consider and review expenditures for June 1, 2020, June through June 15, 2020. Any questions on the expenditures?
Move.
Motion to acknowledge by Mr. Houston. Second by Mr. Llan. Okay. And finally, an item, we're going to table item 17 until we can all be here. We need a motion to table item 17.
So move.
Second.
By Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Llan, all in favor, say aye.
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 And let me see what else we got. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Llan. The time is 6:24. Thank you, guys.